All right, time is 7:00 PM. We're gonna go ahead and call that meeting to order. And if we could start off with a roll call, please.
Norrie Frederick, absent. Adam Hemkin.
Here.
Andrea Corey.
Here.
Kelly Moyer, absent. Greg Meyer.
Here.
Lisa Schumacher.
Here.
Tyson Search.
Here. Perfect. And everybody, those that aren't already standing, please stand with me. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Perfect. Thank you all so much. Welcome all to visitors. I like to see a good crowd here. We appreciate you taking the time to join us this evening. We're gonna get into public comments, but a couple of housekeeping things first. As I said before the meeting started, make sure everybody signs in, please. I wanna know you're here. Public comments are limited to three minutes apiece, okay? If you have common things, you can kinda elect somebody to say the thing just in their set time. We wanna hear everybody out, but again, saying the same thing over and over is kinda productive sometimes. When you come up, if you would, state your name and spell your name, please, for we have the press here, so they wanna make sure they give you credit for your great statements that you're about to make. And then there's a piece of tape on the floor. That's a great area to stand in, so we can understand and hear you. Okay? Who's first?
I'd like to start with a statement. As most people know, there's been quite a bit of discussion regarding Columbia School Districts and social media. These situations are difficult because we do not speak about personnel or student issues. And with the absence of any comment, that void often gets filled with opinions and conjecture. Thinking about this meeting tonight, I wanna say a few things. The first is that our schools, they do a very good job of separating politics and education. We know that the freedom of speech stops at the schoolhouse doors. Our employees and our students, we're all human. That means we all have our own individual opinions, and in our nation, we have the freedom of speech for those opinions. Most importantly, though, when we disagree, we need civil discourse. That's key. When our students, our employees, when we violate that and a disruption in school is realized, we do address it. Tonight, the board's going to listen to the comments, thoughts, feelings of the community. That's a wonderful part of our democracy. But we do ask for the comments to be civil. We ask that you come up and you stand at that yellow, green dot. Say your name, spell your name, as the press is here, they wanna make sure they have it recorded properly. We wanna make sure we have it in our minutes properly. We have some people that have notified me that they want to speak. I will say that we also received communications from Mary Beth Babcock, from Matt O'Connell, from Leslie Walter, or Volter, Dan Heiss, and Megan Schmidt, which is in a communications packet that the board has, and they will read at another time, but they will read. With that said, I'm gonna go through the list. Dana McLean, is she here? You're gonna start us off, I believe you're gonna read a letter from Jamie Myers.
Correct, yes. So, my name is Dana McLean, D-A-N-A, last name M-C, capital C-L-A-N-E. I'm reading a letter on behalf of Jamie Myers, who is out of town. Her name is Jamie, J-A-I-M-E, Myers, M-I-E-R-S. All right. Good evening, thank you. I am writing about the recent suspension of our CHS English teacher. Our senior had her for AP Lit last year and was excited to have her for AP Lang this year. English is not his best subject, but he said she made it digestible. He said he would not have passed his AP exam without her individualized help, and now sadly believes he will not pass his next AP exam without her. Our older son said she did not express her political beliefs in his class, even if students got on the topic. She expected her upper-class students to act like adults and enforced a structure that made her class a learning environment. I know firsthand that this teacher cares deeply for her students and very much wants them to learn and be successful in her class and in life. I have read her scholarship recommendations to her students, and what she writes exemplifies her close relationship and pride in them. This teacher has a right to express her opinion on her private personal Facebook page. Freedom of speech is a hallmark of the US Constitution and political press, political speech is protected by our Constitution, and it doesn't matter who agrees or disagrees with what is said. The suppression of private opinion by a public entity such as our school district is chilling to free expression and education itself. Quoting a public figure who said something with which you disagree is not a crime. People share posts that they think are just and inspiring while others may see them as hateful and racist. It goes both ways, and we have a right to speak up when we see someone or a demographic slandered, albeit Charlie Kirk or transgender kids. In the last week, I have seen a rise in Facebook doxing people with opposing viewpoints, which is publicly exposing someone's private information to shame, embarrass, harass, or harm them and their jobs. And besides the online bullying, I have heard there are students concerned, including my daughter, to speak up for this teacher because they could be ostracized or harassed. There is no room for gray areas when it comes to disciplining or suspending our children in administration. What is your policy when it comes to personal Facebook posts by teachers, administrators, and board members? Is it crystal clear and balanced? And what is your policy if someone is being doxed? This one-sidedness is trickling down, and the students are watching. Please make the rules very clear for all of us. I also request that you take into consideration our viewpoints, showing open dialogue and work through differences. To summarize, you have allowed a select group of people with the same mindset to end a 24-career, your career of a dedicated teacher. You have brought on stress and grief for many CHS students and possibly changed the course of their AP classes and college exams. I can only assume this is going to stifle other teachers from expressing their private political opinions, and I cannot see how this advances the cause of education, the sole mission that this school district is charged with. Keep politics and private opinion out of it, respect the constitutional rights of students and employees to free speech. Thank you.
Thank you. Molly McLean? As we get through the list, we'll ask for people that wanna speak.
Hello, my name is Molly McLean, M-O-L-L-Y, M-C, capital C-L-A-N-E. I'm a senior in the AP Literature and Composition class. I am here with the concern of the future of my education, along with the education of over 100 of my peers also affected by this situation. I feel, I should feel, I should not feel afraid to stand up here today to speak to a board of people who should have my best interests in mind, but unfortunately, I do. Although I stand in fear, I also have faith that this ending can be altered. I believe I can speak on behalf of my peers to say that we are left with hurt hearts, essays we can no longer write, and projects we can no longer turn in, and most importantly, an abandoned English education due to social media. Schools preach on the fact that social media is one of the main root causes of bullying, talking specifically about their students. I personally did not believe that my teacher, a well-educated adult with the capacity to teach students to grow into their own person, could be pushed into the mess of rumors and lies, especially from people who have never met or spoken to her, let alone been her student for over a year, like me and all these other students you see here tonight. Education is a tool that no one can take away from you, correct? Because this school district has shown me this past week that that is a lie. You're taking away my ability to grow and become the person I want to be. Why? Because someone has differing views from you? In turn, you are showing all your students that this is the way they should react when there is a disagreement. Ms. Adams has never said anything political in her classroom. I do understand there will be a solution to this problem, but there should have never been a problem in the first place. No matter how this will be resolved, this situation will affect Ms. Adams, my peers, and me for the rest of our lives, when it may only affect you for a week. From this experience, I have grown my ability to empathize with others who have dealt with similar situations. There is no way to change the negative impression that this will leave. But what you can change is how you choose to support your students and teachers in the future. Thank you.
Emily Velnasky?
Good evening, my name is Emily Velnasky. My first name is spelled E-M-I-L-Y, and my last name is spelled V-E-L, and is in Nancy O-S-K-Y. I am here tonight speaking in support of Mary Adams. My two children have been in Mrs. Adams' classes at CHS for the past four years, including this current year. In the Columbia School District, my children have learned reading, writing, and arithmetic well enough to be inducted into the National Honor Society. But our schools don't just teach academic subjects. My children were also taught what cyberbullying is, the harm it can cause, and what to do if they or someone they know is being bullied. For students, the expectations surrounding bullying and cyberbullying are very clear. Heartbreakingly, one, now one of the last lessons my son, who is a senior, will learn here, is the consequences of cyberbullying that are very real and for him, very painful. He's lost not only his trusted teacher, Ms. Adams, but beyond not having a class with his favorite teacher, he will have to dramatically change his plans now for how he's gonna prepare for college, right in the middle of his senior year. Ms. Adams has proven herself to be devoted to helping her students achieve their goals. I've seen this firsthand with my daughter, and to helping them become good communicators, as well as good thinkers. Beyond the work she does for class, she helps them edit the essays they write for college applications and for scholarships. She writes letters of recommendations for many students. Among her many classes, she teaches two that are AP level. These classes make it possible for those who do well to receive college credit and reduce the overall amount of the college cost for themselves. It's bad enough that her students will miss a year's worth of lessons with her. But the families that are relying on their child earning AP credit and having an incredible teacher's support on college applications have lost that as well. Our students have lost not just college credits, but scholarship money and possibly admission even to their dream schools. On paper, Columbia offers seven AP classes. However, over the course of the last two years, there are no longer teachers for AP US History, AP Calculus, and as of this week, now neither of the AP English classes that were once offered. We're down to three AP classes, two of which you cannot enroll in unless you started studying a foreign language while you were in middle school. Our college-bound students count on these classes to prepare them for life after CHS. The juniors and seniors are completely out of luck unless they're willing to teach it to themselves and sit for the test without a teacher to support them. As for the younger students who even knows what classes are gonna be available to them when it's their turn. I am personally thankful for what this school district has done for my children, but I am even more thankful that the youngest is almost graduated and nearly out of the mess that this district has become. I am shocked, saddened, and embarrassed that members of our community have treated one of our best and most highly qualified teachers this way, and I am absolutely stunned that you, as a board, would allow this. What happened to Mary Adams is wrong, and our students are paying a very high price. And the only people they have to blame are the adults around them that supposedly have their best interests at heart.
Jonah Velnasky?
Hello, my name is Jonah Velnasky, J-O-N-A-H-V-E-L-N-O-S-K-Y. I'm a senior at Columbia High School. The loss of Ms. Adams has affected many of my peers, and I stand before you today representing them. Twenty-four students have shared their thoughts with me in writing, and half have wished to remain anonymous out of fear for their own safety. Every single one of those statements is in front of you in a packet. The most compelling thing that I can share with you tonight is a statement from a student that wished to remain anonymous. "You will not get to know who I am, for I am scared of people knowing that this is my voice. No one should ever be scared to voice their opinion, yet I am nonetheless. Anonymity is my shield keeping me safe from the same community of people who convinced our beloved teacher and safe space for us that her students, whom she would give the world for, would be better off without her. I don't know of any universe such an absurd statement could ever be true, definitely not this one. I cried the night I found out. I cried again while writing this letter. I cried for the loss of our classroom that was once so full of learning, laughter, and love. As I walked into our class today, there was such an eerie emptiness about the room. Nothing had changed, except for the fact that Ms. Adams and every trace of her had vanished overnight. The severe lack of joyfulness that was once plentiful haunted the room. It hurt. It hurt a lot. The entire day was one grieving for all that knew Ms. Adams. I saw firsthand all five stages of grief throughout different students. A close friend of mine had to be told the news multiple times to realize that Ms. Adams really wouldn't be returning. She kept saying there was no way it was really true, and that it all must be rumors. Denial. Another close friend of mine blamed the cruelty of the world. He cursed the cruelty of others and their rumors for escalating things to the point where she felt the only solution was to resign. Anger. There's another brave soul who decided to fight. He told us that even if we don't have the power to get Ms. Adams back, we do have the power to be heard. Bargaining. I, myself, and many others, are in this void of sadness, knowing she's gone. No one can replace her. Depression. And last of all, there is acceptance. The only people who can afford to live in this stage are the people who aren't directly impacted daily by Ms. Adams' absence. Whether this be the group of people who started these rumors, or you, the school board, it doesn't matter. What matters is the drastic impact this has on everyone else who got overlooked in this decision. There has never been, and most likely never will be, a teacher who could be half of who Ms. Adams was to all of us. Not only was she an incredible, supportive teacher of English, but she was also a welcoming, kind-hearted person in general. I've heard multiple students comment on how they hope no new teacher gets to read their recent projects, personal connections they wrote, because they only felt comfortable being so open to Ms. Adams. She was a safe space and a trusted staff member for any of her students to come. We have now lost that. We have lost one of the few teachers here at CHS that students actually trust. Congratulations. We have lost one of the most qualified and dedicated teachers here at CHS who wanted nothing more than to see the success of her students. Congratulations. We have lost Ms. Adams because of what I can only call a group of adult bullies, gossiping and spreading rumors in the community. Congratulations. I am disappointed in the community of Columbia for harboring such a hostile environment, and I am in awe of how little the school board did to protect the teachers that it claims to represent.
Gabrielle James?
My name is Gabriel James, spelled G-A-B-R-I-E-L-J-A-M-E-S. Good evening, my name is Gabriel James. I'm currently a freshman in college, but was a student of Ms. Adams for two years. I'd like to express my gratitude for the opportunity to speak and hope that my experience within her classroom will help build an understanding of the gravity of this loss for my siblings, friends, former school, and community. Preparing students for an AP Language or AP Literature exam is not an easy task. It requires fostering the ability to critically engage with arguments and analyze difficult texts. Quite often, it deals not in guiding students towards identifying right or wrong answers, as is more common in a STEM-focused course, but rather providing them with intellectual tools to tackle problems of exceptional depth. Despite the intrinsic complexities and headaches of teaching students how to digest this material, Ms. Adams walked a fine line between ensuring that her students were prepared for the exam and creating a curriculum that was fun and engaging. We interacted with texts and concepts through a combination of projects, presentations, writings, games, and group discussions, many of which were very collaborative and humorous. She offered detailed feedback on her writing, and if at any point I needed clarification, she was always available to help me analyze the flaws in my work. In general, the day-to-day atmosphere of the class was quite relaxed, with a few exceptions because a few days we did very heavy writing. This was not due to lack of content, but instead due to an efficient learning approach. Genuine apprehension of concepts was prioritized over pathetic obsession with grades, taking pressure off of students to perform and allowing us the room we needed to grow as writers. For many students, Ms. Adams' classrooms were a safe space. Additionally, she went to Great Lakes to ensure that her classroom was a place of utmost inclusivity and to avoid impressing her political views upon us. I believe that I owe a great deal of the development of my writing skills to her consistent guidance and encouragement, and I can say for certain that I've used things not specific just to AP Lang or AP Lit, but to her teaching throughout the college application process and my classes this semester. Reflecting upon the current situation and the sudden and unclear exit of Ms. Adams represents not only the loss of all AP English and several, or the sudden and unclear exit of Ms. Adams represents not only the loss of all AP English and several other English classes at Columbia High School, but the loss of a formative influence for current and future students. Ms. Adams was a truly invaluable educator, and her absence will be sorely felt. This is not an isolated incident, and similar situations are transpiring all around our nation in response to recent events. I now plead to each and every one of you to be extremely mindful of the way that our emotions are being directed and utilized, and to be acutely aware of the convenience of censorship and division. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the end of the list of people that have asked, so if anybody now would like to make a statement?
My name is Patrick J. Kelly. That's K-E-L-L-Y. I'm a resident of Columbia School District, and I think it's a shame that we're here tonight. The people that are here show you that our feelings are deep. What is wrong with the T-shirt quoting Charles Kirk using some of his own words? He promoted so much rhetoric and responsible for terrorists that as our country is seeing more and more today. I'm sure she had enough of his division, and instead of uniting the country, what, doing what he should have done, whatever happened to our constitutional amendment, number one, freedom of speech? She never hurt anyone, but she must have hurt somebody's feelings. This sure sounds like such a ship to me. Shame on you.
Carrie Clayton, C-A-R-R-I-E-C-L-A-Y-T-O-N. Thirteen, that's how many administrators have left our district since 2012. Thirty-four, that's around the number of teachers who have left Columbia High School alone in that same time period. Those two numbers do not include retirements. I am a parent, community leader, and I taught at Columbia High School from 2012 to 2022. Tonight, I want to share one experience from my career. In 2018, after earning a poor quiz grade, a student wrote a letter saying they hoped my, and I quote, "family was tortured and killed in front of me and that I would suffer for a long time," end quote. Both principals took it seriously. They removed the student from my classroom and contacted the police, but it was considered not a real threat, and therefore, nothing moved forward. The incident never reached the school board, and for the next two and a half years, I saw that student in the halls every day. I eventually worked with the assistant principal and the student to move forward, and I ultimately chose not to press charges. But here's the issue. There was no clear process, no chain of command, and no consistent policy for handling threats. Fast forward to this last week, a far less serious situation was handled immediately with harsh consequences. Why was my written death threat dismissed while this week's case escalated straight to the board? Where is the consistency? Where is the fairness? This inconsistency is creating a climate of fear. In fact, many more teachers wanted to be here tonight to support Mary Adams, but didn't feel safe coming due to intimidating Facebook posts, letting them know that they were being watched and that it would be noted who showed up tonight. Teachers, teachers don't feel safe supporting one another because they're afraid they'll be the next target. They don't feel confident disciplining students that if that student has certain last names or connections. And when teachers don't feel protected or backed up, it erodes trust and drives them out of the profession. In 2022, alone, myself and close to 35% of the CHS staff resigned. So I asked the school board and superintendents directly, what is the district's procedure for handling threats by students, teachers, and community members? What is the chain of command? What is the procedure and protocol for complaints made about teachers and staff? How are the board members and administrators ensuring that staff are treated equitably and consistently? Leadership starts at the top, and the tone you set trickles down to every classroom. Our staff need you to support them, to apply policies fairly, and to create an environment where teachers can work together without fear of retaliation. Our students deserve a district where teachers feel safe, valued, and united, not divided or afraid. Our district has already lost 13 district administrators and at least 34 high school teachers in just over a decade, and these numbers are not equivalent. They are the direct result of a culture where inconsistency and fear drive people away. Even our schools weaker and our students less than. Thank you.
My name is Kelly Graves. I went to school here. All four of my kids went to school here. One of my granddaughters is going to school here. I've got eight grandkids, but seven of them are elsewhere. And I probably am the only one here who disagrees with a lot of this. Number one, I don't know exactly what happened. I read some things on Facebook. If she told, if she laughed at his death, if she made fun of his death, then I agree. Well, maybe, maybe they said that the post was removed, so maybe everybody didn't see it, but I'm sorry.
Can we just leave one person standing at the dot talk, please?
What I'm about to say is, I have said all my life, if I'm the only one standing, I don't care. I'm gonna speak my piece too. And I am not, I, my one son had her as a teacher. I had some dealings with her. One was negative. And when I questioned some inappropriate books, I was basically, I was told that, you know, by her, that I had no reason to do that, and she was untimely. Okay? So I'm speaking my piece. Parents have that right to say what they feel is appropriate for their children. Yes. And they should not ever be ridiculed. appropriate for their children. Yes. And they should not ever be ridiculed. I don't know exactly what went on, but I do know that a post was removed. And this is what any of us -- I'm a school bus monitor for Columbia, and I am very strict with the kids, but they know what they can get by with and what they can't. I'm very good to them, just like I am all of my eight grandkids. And I would not condone any of this. And I'm not going to ever -- Charlie Kirk was a great person. You can all disagree. I don't care. I know he was a great person. I followed him for years. And I've got, out of four of my kids, only one probably wouldn't agree, and that's okay. That's okay. We get along fine. I'm here to say that I don't know if she should have to be forced or fired, forced to resign. It just depends on the situation. But I know that one thing: We have to start standing up for our kids, for our nation, and it has to be -- we can't condone this. We cannot condone death. When somebody, and there's a lot of people out there ridiculing his death, ridiculing him, and I, for one, would never, I do not like, I will tell you who I don't care for. I did not support Biden, Obama. Okay, okay. I did not support any of them. And I will be the first one to say it. You've all got your opinions, but I would never have wished death. I would never have ridiculed or-- We are going to have to answer. So I say this to say that I don't know how I feel about her being forced to resign or fired. It would depend on exactly what was said. She's influenced a lot of our kids, and hopefully in the right way. And so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Harris, K-A-T-H-Y-H-A-R-R-E-S. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. I graduated from CHS in 1968, and I went on to teach high school English until I retired. My three kids graduated from CHS in the 90s, and they all went on to have successful careers. Five of my grandkids are currently students in the district, and because of the programs offered, and because of the great teachers they have, they're all thriving. The district has been good to my family, and as the former U.S. President used to say, "We definitely have a dog in this fight." I also want to say that I know Mary Adams. I knew her first as a colleague as English teachers teaching in different districts. Then we became friends, and now I also know her because until last week, she was the English teacher for two of my grandsons. When I'm lucky enough to spend some one-on-one time with my grandkids, which doesn't happen a lot because they're busy, I always ask about school. I ask what they did at recess, who they played with at recess. I ask them what they talked about in science and what they talked about in social studies. I ask them what, of course, I ask them what books they're reading in English. Last year, when my grandson Charles was a junior, I asked him, "What's the hardest class you have?" He said without hesitation, "It's AP English." And I said, "Well, what are you doing in class?" And he said, "We're writing critical analyses. They're really hard, and they really make me think." I was thrilled with that answer, that they really made him think. Well, at the end of last year, he took the ACT along with every other junior in the United States. He's a pretty smart guy, and he did over, he did well overall, but he got a 36 on the English portion of that test. I credit the teachers of the district, from Mrs. Durbin in kindergarten through Ms. Adams in AP English, with that score that he had. I want to say here, I know what the Facebook posts were, and I also know what Ms. Adams' explanation around those posts were. What I don't know is when the online Facebook harassment that included false accusations and outright lies began, when the bullying that continued up until a couple of days ago, when there were veiled threats against any teacher who showed up here tonight, any person who showed up here tonight, that they would be watching and they would know who it was. And then when the phone calls began to all of you, what I don't know is why Mrs. Adams wasn't afforded the respect she had earned as a veteran teacher of hundreds of students in this district, why she wasn't given and finally, why she wasn't believed as the caring, compassionate, and decent human being that she is. Thank you.
Let me interject before you start, okay?
Absolutely.
A couple of you guys are getting a little long. Three minutes is really what you should do. I really hate to cut anybody off, so we kind of condense it. I haven't cut anybody off so far, but kind of be mindful. It's, we have a lot of people want to speak, and we want to be respectful of everybody's time.
Understood. I'll try to keep it short. My name is Kaylin, K-A-E-L-Y-N, last name O'Brien, O apostrophe capital B-R-I-E-N. I graduated Columbia High School last year. I've been in the district all my life. I have a little brother in the district in this building. I was taught by several teachers in here, even outside of school, outside of Columbia. I went on to do the Running Star program because I no longer felt supported in Columbia High School. And I'm sorry to say that because I know you all don't want that to be true. Some of you, some of you supported me when I thought I'd take my own life. I'm looking at one teacher in particular. I was really young. You probably didn't know that. Ms. Adams was one of those teachers. And I don't think that I will convince you any more than anyone else, but Ms. Adams deserved to be here. She was so qualified and so educated, and she taught me so much. And I hope that you all understand. Thank you. I hope you all understand that this was an incredible mistake, and I hope you all regret it.
My name is Brenda Landman, L-A-N-M-A-N, and I am here in support of Ms. Adams, one of the school's best teachers. Although I didn't know her personally, I spoke to a number of parents, and one that I spoke with said they've never known Mary to be anything but inclusive, kind, and generous. I wish I could say the same about all CSH teachers. I believe she was suspended unjustly for sharing a quote from Charlie Kirk on her personal Facebook page, not in a classroom. His quote, I can't stand the word empathy, actually. I think the word is a made-up new-age term, and it does a lot of damage. So what? What does that even mean? You can have some discussion on it. Whether you agree or not makes no difference. It's not hate speech. Ms. Adams made no other comments about it. It was not even an issue when she originally posted it before his death. So why is it an issue now? Because he's dead? Because J.D. Vance said to fire people who celebrated his death? Who was celebrating his death? I don't know anyone who was. He was alive when Ms. Adams shared his harmless quote. "The action by the school district and board is absurd and totally without merit. You are complicit in destroying democracy." Think about what you're teaching our students, that they don't have a right to their own opinion or to share that opinion because if your employer doesn't like it, they can fire you. That they now live in a country where suppression and censorship is the norm. And what about the impact on those young people that were taking Ms. Adams' AP classes and other classes? Those students need that class to graduate and get credit for college. I've talked to a number of parents, and they all support Ms. Adams, but they were afraid to speak up for fear of retaliation against their students. This is the school atmosphere you have created, and it's wrong.
Hello. My name is Runa Flom. Runa is two syllables. It is spelled R-U-N-E. My last name is spelled F as in Frank, L-A-U-M as in Mary. When I was a kid, I was a student at Waterloo High School. I've never been to a Columbia school until today. And a few years ago, we had controversy rip through our community and through our school board meetings, and at them, things devolved into full-throated shouting and screaming. People interrupt, the entire crowd interrupting the speakers. It was absolutely awful. It was uncivilized. I want to praise everyone in the room for having done a lot better this time around. There was, there was a little bit of interruption, and that wasn't okay. I think that the person, the one person who spoke up in disagreement showed probably the most bravery of anybody in the room so far. I'm not, I'm not committed to that. I just want to say when you are surrounded by a lot of people with frowns on their faces, it's scary. And it is good and American to speak up when you, when you have something to say, even if you're facing everyone around you. That said, from what I've read about this teacher, from what I've learned about her from people who know her, including the people who spoke tonight, I think that you have made a mistake, and I hope that you'll, you'll reconsider your opinion because it sounds to me like you've lost an asset by making the decision that you have. Thank you very much.
I got a couple remarks I'm going to read that I prepared in advance here. But before that, I, I hear a lot of you guys saying about afraid to speak up. This board welcomes opinions from every walk of life. We don't care if we agree with you, if we disagree with you. I said that from the minute I got on the school board, is we want to hear from all sides. I want to hear opposing opinions. We are here, the pay on this job is incredible, as you all know. We're all here for the kids, and if you have an opinion, we're welcome to hear it. Every time we have a school board meeting, we have public comments. Anybody is welcome to speak. We'll give you three minutes. You come, you have the floor, you say what you want to say, and we will listen to you. That much I can promise you. So I want to take a moment to speak directly about the emotions many of you are feeling. The name Charlie Kirk, as it, like many figures in today's political climate, brings with it strong opinions both for and against. Those emotions are real. They run deep because politics in our country has become increasingly divisive. But as your school board president, I want to be clear. I firmly believe politics has no place in our classrooms. Our responsibility is to provide a safe, supportive, and respectful learning environment for every student, no matter what their background, beliefs, or viewpoints may be. We must remain focused on what unites us: preparing our students to think critically, to be kind to one another, and become responsible citizens. That's our mission, and it's far too important to be overshadowed by partisan politics. I ask all of us, staff, parents, community members, to lead by example. Show our students how to disagree respectfully and how to treat each other with dignity, even when we don't see eye to eye. You know, to address the comments tonight, please understand that federal and state laws strictly limit the board and the administration what we can share about any individual personnel matter. While this can be understandably frustrating, the confidentiality rules are in place to protect the privacy and rights of every employee. What we can say is that this was not a decision made or directed by the Board of Education. The resignation was submitted prior to any board meeting and was not a result of board action. The board's role is limited to formally accepting or acknowledging resignations once they are submitted. We do not make or compel those decisions. In fact, the board has no legal authority to force a resignation or fire without due process. Please keep in mind, our role is to govern the district and support our administration, and not to manage individual personnel matters. We simply can't share private employment details, even to correct misinformation, because doing so would violate the employees' rights. We remain committed to support all staff, ensuring respectful dialogue, focusing on the best interest for our students and our school community. On top of that, I admire all of you guys for coming out and speaking your mind. Again, we want to hear from the public. This is, you know, Facebook, you know, one thing I've said I've never regretted arguing on Facebook more. I just don't do it. I don't like to argue with people on Facebook. But the problem is, it's out there. People draw conclusions that aren't necessarily true. I, well, I got a lot I could tell you guys. I can't. It's confidential. It's respect. It's privacy. And we've got to leave it at that for now. All right? No, ma'am. No, I'm sorry. All personnel matters. It's, again, it's privacy for--
But it wasn't the school board, is what you're saying?
Correct. Correct.
Is Mr. Reeves here?
I don't believe so.
Yeah, okay.
And again, we, we would, I, I personally love transparency. I wish I could tell you guys every little bit that, that goes on, but I can't. It's, it's frustrating for me and you both, and I just ask for your patience and understanding and that. And I can tell you what, I work closely with every member of this board and administrators. They have the kids' best interest in mind, all kids, and equally. And I promise you that. We're going to start. Hope comments are over, sir. This is, I'm sorry, it's not, it's not--
Everything you just said, public record.
I said it on the cameras, so yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. All right, we're going to move on. Next item is our correspondence, which there is many, and we will read those.
We'll be emailing it to you tomorrow.
Okay. Sure. All right, we're going to go ahead and continue the meeting. I think everybody now has a chance to have a seat, so that's good. I want you guys all to be comfortable. And we're going to move on to our consent agenda. Dr. Grudy, if you'd be so kind, just walk us through that, please.
You have your minutes and finances. You also have the resignation of Mary Adams, high school English teacher that was sent to us. We've got support personnel we'd like to hire. Casey Bowen is our new administrative assistant. She's sitting at the table there next to Dr. Gany.
Welcome, Casey.
Everybody, if y'all are going to talk, can y'all head out? It just, the sound absolutely loud. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew Hird. We also have a-- Our current cross-country coach is having some intermittent family issues, and so she's going to step in to assist with that. And Madison Noak is an Eagle Zone student worker. Have her working with our Eagle Zone kids. We have two vacancies to declare. As I said, as our high school keeps expanding, we are in need of more custodians, so we still are looking for custodians. And we are also regretfully looking for our high school English teacher. Given all of that, the administration recommends that you approve the consent agenda as presented.
Any comments, concerns, questions? Here in the morning, would you like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Tyson, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Adam. Roll call, please.
Brad Meyer?
Yes.
Lisa Schumacher?
Yes.
Tyson Search?
Yes.
Kelly Moyer absent. Andrea Corey?
Yes.
Adam Hemkin?
Yes.
Noreen Friedrich absent.
Perfect. Congratulations. We're on to item seven is our communication report and presentations. Enrollment report is in your packet.
Actually, we'll be including enrollment reports now that we're back in. They're not in the packet.
Oh, they weren't? I missed that.
Get them in the next, in the next...
They will, will be in your packet.
Yeah.
All right. And we'll go on to our administrative report, our building report. Mr. Dugan, welcome.
Hi. We have our slide in the back. I'm going to talk about some of the pictures back there. So our chocolate bar fundraiser that we do every year ends tomorrow. I'm just curious, those of you that live in Columbia, how many of you have a child ring your doorbell asking to, for you to buy a chocolate bar? Nobody? I'm going to need your address.
We should have brought some. We should have brought some tonight.
So it's a two-week fundraiser. It's very successful. The kids are amazing, the, the parents do a fantastic job. We have a lot of incentives, but we have our lowest enrollment, 399 students this year, but yet we're going to break our record on most chocolate sold this year. So we have 976 boxes of chocolate. Will have gone out the door in two weeks. That's 58,560 chocolate bars. So, pretty amazing. We use that money that we get from the fundraiser for our PBIS school store, field trips, assemblies, special events like, like Kona Ice Truck, and just fund projects around the school.
Speaking of PBIS school store, our students earn Eagle bucks, whether digitally or on paper, and then they can turn in those paper ones and their digital money to purchase things from the PBIS store. They can write, buy things from food to toys to experiences, which kind of are the hot topic. They want to be lunch DJ, or they want to play chess with Mr. Dugan, or have hot chocolate from Ms. Webb, or play Rubik's Cube against Mrs. Meyer. So there's a lot of fun experiences that we then use our chocolate money to fund for them to purchase things at the PBIS store.
So the picture on the left there, that's me on, at sorting day, at the beginning of the year, in the lunchroom. We sort into houses. I'm a Harry Potter fan. When I taught, I did sorting into houses as a teacher. As an administrator, I was trying to figure out how I can do that as well, and I figured out we could do it in the lunchroom. So we sort into houses with the talking sorting hat, and what we basically do is the kids earn points, house points, based off of behavior and showing character traits in the lunchroom. And they earn rewards, and then the house cup is a certain number of points to get a pizza party. And they, they really get excited about sorting day. I play the, the Harry Potter music, and it's a good time.
As a proud Hufflepuff class, they, they really do like that. We also have started a park, a park walk Wednesdays every day, where the teachers, our Parkview Culture Committee has started this, where on Wednesday after school, the staff walks just around the park, I mean, it's right in our backyard, so around the park, do a lap, just to kind of, it promotes healthy habits, togetherness, it gives us a chance to actually talk with grownups and people outside of our own team, and so forth. So that, that's a lot of fun. Also, I'm going to give a little bit of CEA news, which is our Columbia Education Association news. We have participated in the Columbia Days Parade. We gave out pencils and candy and that, so we had a nice participation in that. We are also going to have a twofold presence in the homecoming parade. We are going to have the CEA members walking, handing out the remainder of the pencils and some candy, but also to celebrate our retiring teachers' float, and we will also hand out candy and pencils, too. We are also going to start participating in the Wear Red for Ed every Wednesday, so you'll see a lot of red, teachers wearing red on Wednesdays. And as we begin the new school year, all of our new members received a nice little swag bag of Columbia Ed Association stuff, so, so that was good. Twenty-five days in, I think CEA's done a lot so far.
So, as was just shared, amazing things are happening in our district. I wanted to touch base, on our first half-day, which happened on August 29th, we had at every building a full, purposeful agenda, which consisted of a multitude of items, curriculum collaboration. We do have some new programs that we're implementing this year. CHS assessment support, we did adopt the program Horizons, and the high school teachers are really enjoying having those conversations about how they can support the ACT state assessment for the high school students. I did get to meet with our high school vocational department, and we're working on pathways. We set some goals together at that meeting, so they know what they are going to be working on throughout the year to continue those pathways for our students. I have to shout out the Columbia EMS and PD. They helped with our other trainings. We are doing 4E training. I look at Officer McCorder, he's one of the leaders in this, at every building this year, which means there's multiple 4E trainings throughout the year, because we wanted to have specific scenarios at the building for our staff members to run through. Whereas next year, we'll go back to one district 4E training, which would be once a year, and we would do broader situations. All of our new hires receive CPR and AED training as well, as I said, at the Columbia EMS. Good things happened. Off to a good start. New curricular programs that I stated we are working on continually, the ELA program that the board approved last year is off and running to a great start. We started our collaborative meetings, and I, those meetings are, are the days that really make my job so worthwhile, because I get to meet with my instructors and really get to talk about what's going on in the classrooms with the students. Social studies curriculum, we were off to a late start. However, the positive is they have the most up-to-date copyright for the book, but we all now have our materials for social studies, and that is off and running. And I cannot forget to mention our STEM program, which is new at the middle school. I was able to go to the Rotary meeting this past, this month, and I spoke specifically on the STEM program that Mrs. Haven has taken off and running. Kids are loving it, she is loving it, the Rotary was loving it. I just kind of wished I would have brought an experiment for them to do as well. I think they would have enjoyed that. And I also have to mention, Mrs. Haven did invite me over this past weekend to a conference that she spoke at. She did amazing doing that presentation, and I know she's utilizing everything she shared in the classroom for our STEM program for our students. And the last thing I wanted to mention is ISBE finally released the new state assessment cut scores. I wanted to mention this this month, because next month, we will get our new school report card. So ISBE came together, and they decided, along with a multitude of educators, over 250 educators, that we need to do something with how our cut scores are. And you can look, just with that graphic, they didn't even have the same language. And that's what we talk about with curriculum mapping, right? We have to have a consistent language. So what they did over the past few months is they worked together to get new cut scores, which are more unified, and that is the second graphic that you will see up on the board. All three of our state assessments, IAR, ISA, which is our science assessment, along with the ACT, now have similar cut scores, which are going to make interpreting the scores much more beneficial to not only the educators, but the families and the students that do want to be successful throughout their educational time in district and then post-secondary. A lot of great things are happening. That's all I have.
Awesome. Thank you very much. And last but not least, our superintendent's report. Dr. Grady?
Yeah, mine's going to be a lot shorter. A lot of good things happening in the curriculum, though. The office opened, so now if you go and visit the high school, you would go to where the diagonal parking is at the front, and you can get into the office through those main doors. In December, they will be finishing up, and in January, we will be able to start going into the auditorium through those doors. They have started tearing up the back of the parking lot, and you can start seeing where the footprint of the new gym will be. Those are going to be popping up in, in October, and so that was really the key thing that has been happening here. I do need to apologize to the board. I was remiss in adding the agenda item of a budget hearing. Before this meeting, we were supposed to have a budget hearing that has been posted for the last 30 days, and listened to any comments about the budget, and then we were going to approve the budget. I literally posted this agenda three different times with changes, each time not including the budget hearing. So Monday or Tuesday next week, we need to have a budget hearing and approve Action Item A, which is going to be tabled, and I will post that meeting tomorrow. My apologies. I'm in my year of my lasts, and I've, I've said if we have any special meetings, I'm not going to be happy. This one's completely my fault, and I apologize. So Monday or Tuesday, can I get four people to, or more, to come to a budget hearing on, does Monday work for the group? Yes, Monday? Yes? 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 Six o'clock? Five o'clock? Four o'clock? Seven o'clock?
Four or five works for me.
Four or five works for you? What time?
I work from home, so you, I can come over there.
Wow. So Monday at five o'clock?
Monday at five o'clock.
I will post that tomorrow. Monday at five o'clock, we will have a budget hearing that we were supposed to have today, and Action Item One, which is to approve the budget for FY '26, will also be an action item at that meeting. Thank you, and I apologize. After this meeting, we will have executive section, an executive session, a closed session. We will have no action afterwards, so we'll just be coming back from closed session and closing out. That's it for the superintendent's report.
Perfect. Thank you very much. All right, move on to our items for action. As Dr. Grady said, we're going to table Item A, which is the approval for the budget, and we're going to write into B, which is approval of resolution...
Steefel is our bond counsel that has been helping us with the funding of the bonds for the high school addition.
So this is our final step in the funding for the high school. So I'm glad to have so many people here to witness this. Very exciting for our district that...
Lots of exciting things going on, so it's hard to top the chocolate bar fundraiser, that's for sure. I'll try my best.
It's not so much the chocolate bars, but these crooks that the kids are trying to earn.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Do you want to leave two for Noreen and Kelly? Do you want to leave two?
Yeah, could we have two more? I've got two board members that are absent.
Absolutely.
What would I do without the detailed people around me?
I don't know.
My wife's been asking that for a while.
I guess I'm your board wife.
I accept.
I got too much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Do we have one more of these?
Yeah.
If not, we can share.
Yeah, you guys only will need one physical copy, but...
Okay.
And then I can also send you that digital one.
This is the one where they need to sign.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll keep this brief. I know this meeting has been going on long enough, and lots of exciting other things to talk about after this, so... You know, Chris, you mentioned this is your year of last, so it's only fitting that, you know, this bond sale went out with a bang, as it was the last part of this plan of finance here on page two. You know, this has been in the works for a couple of years, so we're, we're at the finish line, essentially. Within a month, this will all be closed, and you guys can put this all behind us and focus on actually, you know, finishing construction and finishing the building. So with that being said, I mentioned it went really well. As much as I would like to take credit for all that, you'll see on page three that interest rates have just been going down, 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 over the last, you know, six or seven months or so. So what you'll see here on the first page is the AAA MMD benchmark curve. That's essentially a benchmark for interest rates that we use, and a good way to measure, you know, how interest rates are doing. And as you'll see on the bottom, ever since Liberation Day, which was early April, interest rates shot up, and then since then, they've been going down. So it's been really nice to see, on our end at least, and certainly for you guys as well, that interest rates have just been falling since then, and we priced on, on a good day, we believe. So I mentioned pricing. This morning, we went out to market and sold your bonds, and investor demand was really good. So, long story short, you know, there was much more demand for your bonds than we could have, than bonds were available. And you'll see on these bars here, that the height of those bars represents the investor demand, and that little black line on each individual maturity represents how many bonds were available. As you'll see, those bars are higher than those black bars, which is always a good thing. And when it's higher, when there's more demand than there is supply, you can kind of move those interest rates back and lower those interest rates, and allow you guys to get a better deal, essentially. And you'll see those green numbers above those bars, that's just those interest rate adjustments we've made on each of those individual maturities. So because of... That's one, one hundredth of a percent across pretty much every single maturity. All in all, that allowed you guys to lower your interest rates by about two basis points, or about two, two one-hundredths of a percent, which definitely saves, I would say, estimate about $40,000 in debt service across, across the life of the bonds. And it's also worth mentioning that your top investors from the sale today are Pinco, Northern Trust, Nuveen, RNC Capital Management, lots of investors were jockeying over your bonds, and we can certainly send a full list of those investors, but lots of Illinois-based accounts as well. So on the next page, that kind of summarizes it. On page five, this last plan of finance, we're trying to get 29 million out of it, and you guys got that full 29 million out of it. As I mentioned, the closing date, you guys will actually officially lock in this money in October. And then the final maturity, you know, we've been sending around a few scenarios for you guys, or at least certainly you, Chris, and I'll have this comparison in the back, I believe. But now the final maturity is 2040. So now you'll only be paying these off for 15 years. And on the, in the middle there, you'll see that optional call date. Even though you'll be paying it off until 2040, you guys have the option to refinance it in 2034. You know, we believe that interest rates right now are pretty good, but say interest rates, you know, eight years from now drop, you guys have the opportunity to refinance again. You know, I'm not sure if you guys will be here, but certainly the district will, will benefit from it.
So I'm sorry to interrupt. We have to wait until 2034 before we can refinance?
Well, so technically, yes. On a tax-exempt basis, you will have to wait until 2034 to refinance it. But say your interest rates come way, way, way down, you technically could do what's called an advanced refunding, and refund them on a taxable basis.
Okay.
But that really assumes that interest rates have gone way down, which is, is unlikely, to say the least.
Would there be a fee excluded?
So part of this borrowing process, it includes that cost of issuance, as we call it. So we would, we would obviously run that calculation and make sure we're incorporating that, because ultimately, you can finance those fees associated with the, with the bond transaction. So that's all calculated. Typically, you're looking for something like two or three percent savings when you're refinancing this. And then here in that middle line, you'll see your interest rate, just for, you know, not, not necessarily important, but your interest rate is 3.94%. So we all have on the back comparing it to the other scenarios we ran, but in a vacuum, 3.94% is very good. And on the middle there, you'll see that optional call date. Even though you'll be paying it off until 2040, you guys have the option to refinance it in 2034. You know, we believe that interest rates right now are pretty good, but say interest rates, you know, eight years from now drop, you guys have the opportunity to refinance again. You know, I'm not sure if you guys will be here, but certainly the district will benefit from it.
So I'm sorry to interrupt. We have to wait until 2034 before we can refinance?
Well, so technically, yes. On a tax-exempt basis, you will have to wait until 2034 to refinance it. But say your interest rates come way, way, way down, you technically could do what's called an advanced refunding and refund them on a taxable basis.
Okay.
But that really assumes that interest rates have gone way down, which is unlikely, to say the least.
Would there be a fee excluded?
So part of this borrowing process, it includes that cost of issuance, as we call it. So we would obviously run that calculation and make sure we're incorporating that, because ultimately, you can finance those fees associated with the bond transaction. So that's all calculated. Typically, you're looking for something like two or three percent savings when you're refinancing this. And then here in that middle line, you'll see your interest rate just for, you know, not necessarily important, but your interest rate is 3.94%. So we all have on the back comparing it to the other scenarios we ran, but in a vacuum, 3.94% is very good. So we've seen other transactions in the four-plus-ish range over the last few months, so it's nice to see that come down.
Although we did refinance our bonds originally at 1%.
Yeah, that was probably during COVID or something like that.
Mrs. Noble would comment that that was a fluke numerous times.
Yes.
We like flukes.
Yeah, we like flukes, too.
We'd like another one, too.
So if that ever happens, well, you guys will be the first to know, that's for sure. But also part of... Another thing I would like to mention, part of why this scenario is so much better than it was before is because we're now baking in EAV growth. In the old models, again, I'll show you in the back, we weren't baking in as much EAV growth. So the fact that we, you know, estimated about 7% EAV growth in Levy Year '25, and then 5% in '26 through '27, and et cetera, in that second-to-last column, that has definitely helped the financing, just shortening up the deal and making sure you guys are, you know, capitalizing on EAV growth that is, you know, likely going to happen. And then all things considered, that gets you guys to a 75%... 75 cent bond and interest tax rate, which Page Six will help illustrate a little bit. So here, in that first 75%, that those blue columns, you'll see that those are your prior bonds outstanding, and what we did is we just melded those two together, those prior bonds, as well as those 2025 bonds, to allow you guys to have a level tax rate, including that EAV growth. And you'll see in that, those far right green columns, that's the total debt service you guys are going to be paying, so those old bonds plus those new bonds, which factors in, given that EAV growth to that 75 cent rate we're talking about here. And then here on Page Seven, you know, Chris, we've been sending you lots of options. It's always nice to see, you know, just how much better this has gotten, really, over the last year, two years, and specifically over the last six months. So when we first were running this, we were looking at a 2045 final maturity, so paying this back over 20 years. And again, that EAV growth, those interest rates, allowed you guys to pay this back only over 15 years. And then also, that translates to about $10 million in debt service, so that's principal plus interest that you guys are now not paying because of that EAV growth and because you guys were able to get some really exceptional interest rates. And just to put a number on it, we were running this at a 4.84% interest rate before. Now you guys locked in that 3.94%, so that's some, you know, 90 basis points in difference. But also, you guys were running it with an 81 cent tax rate, so all those things coupled together, lower tax rate, too. So that's always welcome.
What's our current tax rate on our existing bonds?
On your bond and interest rate?
Yeah, is that the point?
Uh, it's 69 cents.
Yeah, 69.
Yeah, and then the year before that, it was about 73 cents.
Okay. And that's just because the other bonds fell off, so we...
Yeah, I think what it was is we weren't estimating as much growth as we thought. You guys got far more growth than we thought, so just because that EAV went up so much, we weren't able to capture all that. So that's why we had more realistic growth assumptions this time around. And then that's all I got for you guys, but if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions from the board? That's good news. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
We love the extra $10 million.
Yeah, I'm sure about it. So I'll take you.
Exactly. All right. Any discussion regarding...
Not a time.
Maybe a discussion. Oh, sorry. And we want to talk about it? No question. Okay. Would you like to make a motion to approve a resolution providing issue and sale of approximately $33 million of funding bonds for the district and levy taxes to pay for the funding bonds?
I made a motion, but I'm sure that there's an exact verbiage I need to use.
It's in the...
I didn't want to do this.
Just read from the agenda, the approved resolution providing...
I make a motion. We approve the resolution providing for the issue and sale of approximately $33 million of funding bonds of the district and for the levy of taxes to pay the funding bonds.
Well said. All right, we have a motion.
Lawyers are happy.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Andrea. Roll call, please.
Hemken?
Yes.
Corey?
Yes.
Moyer absent. Friedrich absent. Meyer?
Yes.
Schumacher?
Yes.
Search?
Yes.
Perfect. Congratulations, we have a new high school.
We have the funding for the new high school.
We have funding for the high school, exactly. Little bit of work involved in the meantime, but at least we can pay for it, that's important. All right, next item is approve a purchase of a used skid steer and trailer.
The next two items are purchases that I have factored into the budget that we were going to approve tonight. Understanding that you are needing to approve that budget next week at Monday, I... We can't pay people if we don't approve the budgets, I would say that we can move forward with these action items at this point. The first one is a skid steer with trailer. Buying a used skid steer, you do not need to go out to bid. A used equipment, you can just go out and you can find the best deal that you get. I'm asking permission for the maintenance department to get a skid steer with a trailer, which will assist immensely in getting underneath the ice so that you can break up the ice and then plow the equipment. Kurt Steve and his men understand that there is also the need to get out there before some of those while the storm is coming, but the skid steer will help us immensely with being able to break up the ice and get the parking lots cleared. So administration recommends that you approve the purchase of a used skid steer with a trailer for them to bring into the park.
Are we going to have a dollar limit for that?
Yeah, I Googled it, and I was looking, and I would not... It would not go over 30, but I think we could get it in the 20s or low, the used skid steer.
I suggest we table this, and we do a little bit of homework before what you're wanting to get.
Okay.
But I don't think that's enough for...
Because we also need the snow pile and attachments and all the stuff to make it productive.
Exactly.
We will table this, and I'll have it on Monday.
And this, the skid steer for the general public that's listening, we... As a lot of parents and students realize that we had a little problem last year's winter with snow clearing and that sort of thing, so we formed a committee, we looked into it, we got an action plan, how we're going to address that in the future, but the skid steer is one big part of it. We still have the equipment that we need, and we made arrangements to have salt... Even if we have overtime, we're going to get the parking lot salted before the rain, the snow comes in, that sort of thing. So we're trying. It's always an opportunity to improve, so... All right. Next one is approval to go out to bid for a new driver's education vehicle.
Yeah, we have a driver's education vehicle that was purchased back in, I believe, 1920 school year, so it's five years old. It's got quite the miles on it. We do have that... Currently, that driver's ed car is running every period. It's also running before and after school to give the kids the hours that they need to drive. Having two of them would be ideal. I would suggest that we go out to bid for a second driver's ed car, and then what would happen is, is in our rotations, next year, we go get a bus. We got a truck last year. We're going to get our fleets in that rotation. And in five years, you would get another driver's ed car, and if the first one that's still there is still alive, we can trade that one in, but I would drive until its wheels fall off, not with the students in it, but...
Figuratively speaking.
Yeah.
All right, any questions, comments, concerns regarding the...
So I know that whenever in the material that I was reading, the current... If we bought one alike, a similar vehicle, it's what we have now, four-door sedan.
$30,000.
Yeah, be under $30,000 is the estimated 27 and change, but it depends on bids.
What kind of car do we currently have?
We have a Chevrolet...
Subaru?
Oh, yeah, Malibu.
Malibu.
Malibu LS.
Gotcha. All right. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Here it is, maybe we'd like to make a motion to go out for bid for a new driver's ed car.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Lisa, second?
I'll second.
Andrea, roll call, please.
Adam Hemken?
Yes.
Andrea Corey?
Yes.
Kelly Moyer absent. Norine Friedrich absent. Greg Meyer?
Yes.
Lisa Schumacher?
Yes.
Tyson Search?
Yes.
All right, that concludes our items for action. Our next one is our discussion items. We'll start off with our facility study.
Yeah, I kind of covered that in the superintendent's report.
You did, yes.
I mean, it's coming along, and I took a tour of it today when we did the OAC meeting. We're still doing the punch list on the office area that we've come into possession of. I will tell you from a person who has gone through construction before, I really, in hindsight, like moving into the one phase of it while the construction people are still there, because we're able to daily monitor the HVAC and the other little tiny tweaks that they need to make to make it work, and that seems to be going well as we go through those punch lists.
So I just, again, just want to reiterate my thanks to the staff and students and family that the construction is a distraction, it is a disruption. It's all in the name of progress, but we do appreciate everyone's patience and willingness to be flexible with us. We had to move our move-in date in the front door. You know, the traffic patterns change as a result, all along with the new school year starting, so we are very appreciative of that. We know that there are... There's noise outside of the classrooms, you know, the teachers and students, especially on that front parking lot side, are probably most affected, but everyone is to a certain degree. So I want to thank everyone involved for your patience and flexibility with that. We... I think everyone understands we're going to have a beautiful school with a lot more capability when we're finished, so it's for the right reasons, but it doesn't take away from the fact that when you're in an environment trying to work or study or read or whatever, and there's loud noises and banging and construction workers right outside your window, that's not optimal, so thank you for that. But as you can see, there are a lot of things changing quickly at this point. You'll see a lot more visually. There's been a lot of work been going on for many, many months, but now you're starting to see all the siding going on. Your sidewalks are all poured, handrails will go up, all the face of the building will be done soon. Within the next couple of weeks, it'll be truly dried in, which is the date I'm looking forward to, when all the roofs are completely sealed and we can just focus on internal work inside. But I hope you guys are starting to see, and, you know, the increase with the performing arts stage or performance stage, I don't think we're supposed to call it, but it's something we don't have now, so that will be very exciting to have, as well as the crew being next to it. Anyway, thank you to everybody that's working and working on around or dealing with the construction, but the crew is doing a great job, so we're looking forward to the end of the calendar year when the front part's finished.
Yeah. We actually had a good discussion today about getting in, because we did get not into the office area when we thought so, and getting it in the dry will no longer have the rain dates. We had 33 rain days, which is why we got pushed off on the office area, but in January, we were told by Petker, we will have our students on the stage doing their practices, because our next play is in February, and it will be in the auditorium, so that's going to be exciting to see.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Next item is our individual board member comments. Anyone have anything they'd like to say this evening? All right. Next item is presence prerogative. I kind of did that at the beginning of the meeting, so I might not bore you again with any of that kind of stuff. As Dr. Gruddy noted to earlier, we do have an executive session tonight for the purposes or the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity pursuant to 5 ILCS 120/2C1, and also student disciplinary cases pursuant to 5 ILCS 120/2C1. Oops, sing nine. I got it. I was trying to do without the glasses, and it just didn't happen tonight, so... And also see the placement of individual students in special education programs or other matters relating to individual students pursuant to 5 ILCS 120/2C10. Would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn into executive session?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Tyson, second. Adam seconds. Roll call, please.
Andrea Corey?
Yes.
Adam Hemken?
Yes.
Norine Friedrich absent. Kelly Moyer absent. Greg Meyer?
Yes.
Lisa Schumacher?
Yes.
Tyson Search?
Yes.
All right, at this point, we have to ask all you guys to depart our lovely...
There is no action after this, so...
See you tomorrow morning. You may come back out.
You are more than welcome to come back and watch us adjourn if you'd like.
What time is it?
Thank you.
If you gentlemen mind if I have your signature?
Yeah. Autographs.
Great second day.
Great second day.
We're back on 9:01 PM. We're back in regular session. We have no action items as a result of our executive session. Only item left is a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Adam second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approves. Close our meeting 9:01 PM. Thank you all for joining us.